Held as a result of the executive order passed on Thursday, March 12th, 2020. Governor Baker issued an order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Chapter 30A, Section 20. That order was effective immediately and until it is rescinded or the state emergency is terminated. I'm going to call it a roll. Commissioner Collins.
President.
Commissioner Stady.
Present.
Commissioner Shaez presently have a quorum. Thank you very much. First order of business is I'm going to ask everyone to join with me for a sad task that I have. A moment of silence for Robert Radek, an employee at the Registry of Deeds, who we can speak about later, who passed away this week. I believe he's a 17-year employee. I believe he began early in 2004 and after a long struggle, passed away this week. So if you join me for a moment of silence for Robert Radek. Thank you very much. We're going to adjourn this meeting in memory of Bob and very sad, and I know, I've known since, we've known since the summer that he was up against it, but he fought a great fight. Number three, minutes of the open session meeting of February 10th.
I'll make, I'll make the motion.
Miss, oh, okay. Just point of order, Mr. Chairman, it was just one slight error and only because I know the person, I can't go without correcting it. Simon Bertolletti from Canton is spelled incorrectly. It's probably a typo. That's on page two of the meeting minutes. He's saying he responded to the fire out of the state Fire Marshal's Office. It spilled incorrectly, probably a typo, but it should be Bertolletti. It's B-E-R-T-E-L-E-T-T-I. We can fix it, but other than that, I would second the motion of Mr. Collins to approve the meeting minutes as amended.
All in favor, approve the meeting minutes as amended?
Aye.
That's true zero. I was not present, thank you. Meeting minutes, and we will correct them, the meeting minutes of the executive session of February 10th, 2021.
Peter, how they look, all right?
I thought they were all right.
Yep. I'm good.
I'll make the motion.
Sure, I'll second.
All in favor of approving the executive session minutes of February 10th, 2021.
Yeah, the motion is made and seconded, but we want to, we still want to hold the meeting, the, the minutes of that meeting because the purpose of the meeting continues.
Okay, we're going to, we're going to hold the minutes of the executive session minutes of the executive session held on February 10th until the matter is adjudicated.
Right, good point.
Okay. Number five, public comment. Mr. Director, do we hear from anyone on the public comment section?
We have not received any requests.
Okay. Thank you. Number six, facility maintenance capital improvement. John McGowan on the line.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon, John.
I don't have, as you know, the capital improvement reports, I don't have any, any on this week. Coronavirus, the COVID-19, once again, I, District Court came up last week. I know, I think I told you about it on third Wednesday. We were, we sprayed it down Wednesday night and Thursday, and evidently somebody come down with it on Friday. Somebody come into the building that tested positive on Friday and Mike called me Saturday and I put a crew together and we went in there Sunday and took care of it. But that was twice in, in four days. So I know they say it's going, it's slowing down, but not slowing down for us. I don't, I don't know what, what to tell you about, you know, I know that it's the employees, mostly all employees. There's only been a one occasion that I know there was a, I think there was a prisoner in Quincy. But other than that, we're taking care of it when it comes up. I have the problem still going on about the batteries. I think I mentioned it to you that when we bought these batteries, gun, the guns, they were, were recall on them on the batteries. They could cause a, a fire or if you leave them in the charger or anything, I've already instructed everybody to take them out. I'm in the process of getting them replaced and I, like I said, I have to cancel tonight's spray because I had to get all the batteries together, take pictures of them and they want us to send a copy over to them with the serial numbers so they'll replace them. I think it's, it's to prove that we have the batteries that need to be replaced. And I'm in the process of doing that. Hopefully it should be done by next week, I would think, maybe, maybe two weeks. But I did, before I ordered a backup gun and a backup sprayer, which came in with the proper plugs and the screws on the batteries. So if anything does come up, we'll be able to cover it in the meantime till we get re-placed, you know, replacements for these batteries. And that's about it. I just wanted to assure you that anything comes up, we'll have the capability of taking care of it. That's about it. If you have any questions, I'll try and answer them.
Thank you, John.
Commissioner Collins, you have any questions?
I'll say.
Richard?
Yes, just quick, John, you know, I'm not going to make that visit to Rentham Thursday. We can talk about that later, okay? The weather, things are, I was going to make sure you knew, that's all. Thank you very much, John. Thank you.
Thank you.
John, I'm happy to hear Commissioner Stady is going to make a visit to Rentham because this whole thing started unfortunately almost a year ago and I remember going on a Sunday morning down to the Quincy Court with the Sheriff's Department and your, and your people, not ever dreaming that would, a year later we'd be fully into it as we are. How many of these guns do we have?
I have one for every courthouse.
Oh, okay.
And I, and I, like I said, I ordered a backup just, just for this reason, in case, you know, in case one of them, you know, it's good to have an extra, just in case. I didn't foresee this happening, but I just do it just in case something, you know, malfunctions in the gun or it breaks down or something, because they are expensive. And at the time, we had a very hard time getting them, if you remember, I mean, it was like a six-month waiting list. And now, now you can get them all, you can get them tomorrow if you order them, you know. But they're, they're working, they're working good though, that's what counts, they're doing the job and.
Okay. And generally speaking, when I attended the, the job at Quincy Court, because one of, one of our largest courts and we also went into the DA's office, how, when your men do an area, how, how long generally does it take? I'm not going to hold you to it, but go on the high side, like you do the whole place or do you just do the area where the individual that reported it were?
Well, we, I do the whole building, because you don't know where the person went while he was in the building. He could have went anywhere and the only way you can make sure of it is to do everything. But when we were doing that building, at that time, when you were there with us, we weren't wiping every computer down, every, every phone and like that, that's what I do now. And I do it, you know, just to, because employees are supposed to do it themselves in the morning. I mean, that's what, we have a sign up here in the registry that employees should take care of their area that they're in. But when somebody comes down with a virus and tests positive, we have to assume that he was, or he or she was anywhere in the building, so we have to allow for that and do it, we wipe everything down.
Okay, I just, I know you're doing.
That answers your question. But when we were there, Commissioner, when we were doing Quincy, that was just a, just a spray down, it was, I don't think there was a report of anybody, we were just doing it.
Oh, preventive maintenance, okay.
Yes, we were just preventive.
But the Denham call, the Denham call was a specific call?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. That's why, that's why I schedule a spray, spraying every Monday, Wednesdays and Fridays. And, but if something, if somebody tests positive, you have to go in and do it before anybody else comes in the building. They could transmit it or pick it up or, you don't know what door knob they touched or whatever. That's why I have the guys go around the ten and two, wiping all the door knobs and every day they do that.
Yes. Well, this is, this is great stuff because it's good to let the public know that we're on top of it and still, despite everyone's efforts, you just don't know where it's coming, you certainly just don't know where it's coming from and.
The problem is, it's only as good as till the next person walks through the door. That might happen. Somebody might go home at night and then come back in the morning and they don't feel good, they go home and then they test positive. Now you, you have to do the process all over again. I mean, that's what we've been doing for a year now, so hopefully, hopefully is, right now, the best thing to do is try and get everybody the shots.
They're coming though. I heard the next, the next group of people is available now, it's opened up, it's 65 and down or whatever, so it's coming, it's getting there, it's getting there. Mr. Chairman, may I ask John a couple of questions?
Sure.
Just John, a quick follow-up, you made me think of it, but anything on the Stoughton Court, the, the air exchange equipment we were trying to get? Any update on that?
As far as I know, it's, I think Nancy's putting it out for bid or she did put it out for bid.
Okay.
I know the, there was somebody down there yesterday. And I think that whoever, it's open for the bidders to get on there and look at it.
That's right.
This week or maybe next, the beginning of next week, I'm not sure.
All right. All right, Mr. Chairman, members of the board and through you, of course, Mr. Chairman. I did want to report that this past week, I had the opportunity to visit the Denham District Court, the Denham Superior Court, actually going under the roof was pretty interesting, taking me up that high with my vertigo, I was like, all right, it was risky, but it was fun. But I know also parts of the registry that are court-related and everywhere I went, I was impressed with two things, the cleanliness of the building, the upkeep is excellent and the positive comments that were given by people voluntarily by John. I know John was setting them up, telling everybody I was coming, but really, John, you're doing, you and your staff are doing a good job. It's very, it's a pleasure to work with you and I just hope you keep it up. All right, that's all. Very good. I hope, I'm looking forward to seeing the other buildings very soon, but the buildings look terrific, you know, in terms of being clean and well-maintained and you're doing all of us pride by the work you're doing. I thank you.
I thank you, Commissioner, for the comment. The men appreciate that.
Keep it up. You're doing good.
Any other comments for the maintenance for John McGowan? Thank you, John.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Again, I'll put the kiss of death on you, it's going to snow again.
Yeah.
I feel bad for opening my mouth a month ago, but it's been snowing. You're doing a good job. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Number seven, appointments. Mr. Buckley, we're going to hear from two vendors, but we're going to do that under item number 13 on the agenda, or we're going to do it now?
I think we could do it now, now, sir.
On, as far as hearing from the two respondents?
In speaking, Nancy McNeely can speak to the particulars, but I believe we do have an appointment with them at 1:15 and 1:30 and I believe they may have other.
Hi, hi Commissioners, it's Nancy.
Hi Nancy. Hi Nancy, is the 1:15 here?
The 1:15 is here, that was Mary Acadi from the Collins Group, then our.
Okay, I see Mary. Okay, why don't we, why don't we do that and then we'll, we'll take the second one and then further in the agenda, there is discussion today around what we're going to hear in the review of the executive. Why don't we turn it over to Mary Acadi, who I believe according is, is from the UMass College Center and they are one of the two respondents. Mary, good afternoon.
Hi, how y'all doing today?
We're doing good.
Excellent. Nice to see you, albeit in Zoom, you know, so I'm happy to be here today to talk about our services and I'll just start a little bit about me, the Collins Center and briefly go through our process. I'm assuming you were able to review the materials we sent, so I won't spend an awful lot of time going through them, because I'd rather just answer your questions. So a bit about me is I'm Mary I. Cardy, I lead the HR practice for the Collins Center for Public Management. We have been in, we were established in 2008 with the sole mission of helping public sector employers do better, that's ours, that is our sole mission. We have grown significantly in the 11-year, 12 years now, we're in our 13th year, I've been with the center 11 years. I was able to, was fortunate enough to quit my job as the HR director for the town of Watertown when I had my third child and daycare was way too expensive, so I had to quit my job and I was blessed to be home with the kids for a number of years. And then I went back to part-time consulting and now I'm, because two of my three kids are in college. So that's me in a nutshell, my biography is in the materials that we sent. I'm here today to talk about, you know, assisting you with your, your search that you want to do. We have done, I think I included information on the Barnstable County Administrator search. We did that search, I was the lead consultant on that a number of years ago and the process we follow is, we work with you all to determine what it is you're looking for, sometimes ideas of what they're looking for. Sometimes they say, well, we want what we had before and we want to replicate it, or we've decided to move in a new direction and let's tweak things a little bit and move forward. It really is up to you of what you're looking for. We certainly will give you our advice on what's out there in the world and in the marketplace, but it's really up to you. We take pride in creating our profile and our description of the organization and the position. It's not a typical position, it's not like you say, oh, there's a town manager or town administrator vacancy available. We follow the same process for that, but there's not a, too many replicas of this particular position you're looking to fill. We have done an awful lot of work with regional entities, with hybrid entities, whether it be housing authorities or retirement boards or regional commissions, we view you more like that than a municipality. You have member, you know, you have constituent municipalities, so we will approach it of what you're looking for in the next person. We assume we'll be working with either an interview committee or a screening committee, that would be one of the questions I would ask you. What is your expectation? Will you appoint a, a screening committee or of, of interested parties, of representatives from around your, your county? Or are you looking for us to work with maybe some staff to be an interview committee? Our process would be the same regardless of what you come up with. So what we do is we create the profile, we ask the stakeholders, whether it's through a written survey, a Zoom meeting, we used to hold public forums in person, but now we kind of are doing things Zoom. We get from you what you're looking for in that next person to hold that job. We ask three simple questions. What are the challenges facing the organization? What is the challenges facing the new person in the job? Maybe it's following somebody who has a different style or who was there a long time. We want to know what it is that we'll be facing. And then finally, we ask, what are the characteristics, whether it be professionally, personally or style, should we be looking for in that, in that person that we're going to be recruiting? Once we get the profile, we then do the recruiting. We found certainly in, in Barnstable County, we recruited somebody who wasn't looking for a job, who we knew from all of our associations and said, you know what, you'd be a great person for, for that job. And we got great candidates for that. We look for people who may not be looking for a job. We may find people in your area who want to move up and move out. We do direct recruiting. We will advertise the job, don't get me wrong, it's not that we don't advertise, we'll put it in, you know, the professional associations, you know, whether it be administrators or other, or my son is making lunch in the background, so please forgive any background noise. Zoom, so, but mostly it's our direct recruiting. The Collins Center has worked with, of the 351 municipalities, we have worked with over 250 of them and we do all types of work with them. We do capital improvement, we do planning projects, we do DPW projects, we do HR projects and each one of those projects is a contact. So we know the talented talents of people throughout organizations across the Commonwealth and we can tap into them either to directly recruit them or see who they know that may be a good fit. So we don't just ask who's looking for a job, we, we find people who we want to attract to a job. So that's how we do the direct recruitment. The next phase would be the resume, we have all the resumes come to our email, that helps with transparency and you'll be shocked to know sometimes organizations are accused of politics. And we help, you know, defray that a little bit by, by using the Collins Center and having resumes come to us, you add that layer of confidentiality, which is very important to candidates. If people, if candidates think their name is not going to be confidential until they're a finalist, you're going to chill the pool of people who apply. If people think their names are going to be, you know, posted someplace or talked about someplace, you're really going to hurt your pool of candidates. So we do a great job working with the screening committees or the interview committees, talking about confidentiality and we have an excellent reputation for maintaining confidentiality of candidates. And so what we do after the deadline is we put together the resumes, we put together a summary table of those people who applied, we share that with the interview committee and we help facilitate their deliberations on who to bring in for a preliminary interview. Now, I say that with purpose. That interview committee and that screening committee are not deciding who the next person will be, they're deciding who the commissioners should see. You know, we, we as a group, I say we, we're not, Collins Center is never a voting member of any interview panel, we facilitate the process. We certainly will give advice, technical advice, if we know a candidate, we can talk about their style, their experience, so we share all of that, but we're not voting members of your group, whoever that is that you decide to, to put on that screening committee. We facilitate, we use, different than other agencies or, you know, our friendly competitors out there in this market, we do not do or recommend a point factor system for people screening resumes. We don't feel that rating somebody a five, four, three, two or one helps because when it comes down to it, it's really about the consensus, not about the score or a matrix. So when we review resumes, we ask the question, is it yes, maybe or no? Do you want to interview that person? So then we, then we analyze, well, who wants to be interviewed, who doesn't, and those in the middle. We come up with a preliminary pool, we help facilitate the standard questions that should be asked at that preliminary interview. We make sure I'm certified, you know, most good HR people know these things, but I happen to be certified by the MCAD on discrimination, investigations and training. We talk about the questions you can and cannot ask in an interview, what could lead to bias. I happen to have a certificate in diversity and inclusion and that really helps frame the process. We do the individual, we do the preliminary interviews and once again, come to consensus of who we want to move to the next phase. And we call it the next phase, we don't call it finalists because they're not finalists until they pass a background check. So we do, we use a separate investigation firm to do credit checks, education checks and criminal checks, both federally and statewide. Then we do the, the personal references. So assuming all of those things go well, that's where your finalists come in. We help facilitate that interview process, we can help you come up with questions, but certainly at that level, the selection is up to the county commissioners and the negotiation is up to the organization. We do not negotiate a contract for you. We can help facilitate conversations, but we're not a party to that agreement. Our goal is to help you do your own process at that point. I went very quickly, I know you're constrained with time, so I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
And Commissioners, any questions for Mary?
Mary, I saw you did a nice job, it's Peter Collins.
Hello.
Mary, I know you have an associate with us here.
Is Michael here with us? Yes, I didn't see him.
Mike, do you have anything to add? Want to say hello?
Well, I just want to say, wait, wait, I have to compliment Michael. Michael is one of my dearest colleagues and he brings the perspective of being, you know, a municipal official at the highest level and, you know, running an electric light plant. So if that's not, you know, crazy, I don't know, so I'll let him introduce himself.
Hello. I'm Michael Hale, I'm glad to be in Massachusetts today and not Texas, because if I was in Texas with a light company, I'd be in a lot of trouble. But no, I am a recently retired, 32-year employee of the town of Shrewsbury, with vast municipal experience. I've been sat on the retirement board for a while in my community. I do have some knowledge in working with the county commission around here, although I don't believe it's as active as Norfolk, but I, I'm very much interested in assisting Mary, should we get this opportunity from the commissioners?
Thank you. Commissioners, any comments?
Peter?
I'm also, I think they did a nice job.
Okay, Mary, let me tell you what I hope.
Joe, could I have a question?
Sure, absolutely.
I just, I thought it was an excellent presentation, thank you for your time in presenting it. I had a couple of quick questions. One was the, what methodology would you use or your group uses to post a job or contact prospective employees? And secondly, as a follow-up, do you keep on file previous, say applicants for similar roles and then circle back to them as well and say, hey, we've got an opening in Norfolk County? Thank you.
Yes and yes. So as, as you, in the proposal, I did mention that we would reach out specifically to the county administrators organization and we would do that certainly here and regionally. I'm not sure, and this would come up in our conversations when we develop the profile, if we would want to search far and wide across the nation, you know, that, that becomes a, we can, it's only the effort of a listserv. And so we would advertise for this position because we don't want to assume we know what career somebody is currently holding. So we would reach out to, there's a lot of good resources out there, whether it be policies, you know, policy organizations, school business managers, the MMA, the ICMA, the regional, there is the MMA in Massachusetts, there's an equivalent one in all of the surrounding states. So we, we send our information to them as well, planning organizations. When you deal with regional entities, planners, sometimes if they're the right fit, are, are good candidates. We would look to those. And yes, to say we have a massive database of resumes would be an understatement, 12 years and 75 searches, you know, garners a lot of, and we do keep, just like you, a table of, you know, the candidates, we maintain that table so we can search for the jobs that they have applied for. So if, if our computer crashes, we're in big trouble, but yes, we do have that.
Right. If I may, one more question, Mr. Chairman?
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you, through you, of course. So I was intrigued, being a former teacher with the idea of not using a rubric per se and your, your analysis of how you analyze the candidates, very intriguing, because on committees I've been on, that is usually the methodology. What, what, what drove you to that and then how do you still differentiate that pile? If you've got people saying, yeah, they're worthy, they're worthy, they're worthy, how do you then glean that off? There's got to be something you use or is it just you go through phases? There's got to be something you use or is it just you go through change the phase?
No, it's a, it's a great question. So in one way, we come up with a rating system of one, two, or three, but we don't use the numerical totals because if I have a bias. So today's Ash Wednesday and I'm going to get my ashes later, later. But if I have a bias that I want somebody who's Catholic, I'm going to give them five points no matter what. I'm have that. So there's no chance of somebody who's getting a one. So by using yes, maybe, and no as a rating, we do tally that. We, and what I do is I put it up on a whiteboard or on a screen and say, there's five people on the committee. You know, Richard got five yeses. So that means he, Richard's going to get an interview. Michael got five nos. Well, then Michael's not getting an interview. And we actually work through that exercise. So if it's all guesses or all nos for an interview, we have the decision. The fun ones are if there's two yeses, two nos, and one maybe.
Right.
We debate that. Now, we tend to, especially at the preliminary round, we want to include people, not exclude. And by not having a point total, somebody can make an argument for an outlier kind of candidate. Well, maybe they're a public works director. Now, that's probably a good pool of candidates that we could use to, you know, maybe they have the skills. So by not having it be an absolute score, you allow for variance. And then you have a conversation about those who aren't all or nothing and the maybes. And if it's, you know, sometimes we'll have one yes and four nos. Then you look at it and say, okay, the four nos, are you really, you know, the one yes, are you really going to convince the four nos? I've seen it happen because we all don't live in a fishbowl. Now, of course, my cellphone is ringing, so I apologize. We, we, we don't need, and I'm waiting for my son to answer it and hang up, but that's probably not going to happen. If there's a one yes, maybe that's because somebody knows the person, knows that they might have the right skillset. And they can advocate for that person. Whereas if you do just a numerical, you lose the nuances. You lose the consensus and then you have winners and losers in the group. Because if, if Richard was my favorite and I couldn't advocate because the points weren't there, it diminishes. The last thing I would say on the issue of resumes is that whoever the interview committee or screening committee is, you will see every resume that comes in. Some organizations screen people out based on the minimum requirements. It's not saying that we couldn't do that. We can absolutely do that. But we have found with committees, you want to see everybody who applies, particularly in a position like this that doesn't have an absolute set of requirements. You're really looking for somebody who's, you know, got the skillset, the leaders, the leadership skills. Whereas when we're doing for the town of Brookline, we're doing, we're recruiting for their, their town engineer. There is an absolute requirement for a PE.
Sure.
Don't have that, you know, so, so that's why we want to be inclusive and we don't want to substitute our judgment. We will facilitate those conversations and help you get to that consensus. But excellent.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mary. Michael, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mary or Mike? Okay, Mary, we're committed to this. We have on later in our agenda, on the item number 13th, a, a, a general, a general session, an open session relative to this choice of the consultant as well as a couple of options and, and discussions we want to have and among the commissioners. So I, I can't promise you, we're going to have an answer today, but I'm telling you that this is a very top, very near the top of our priority and we're, we're anxious to get this completed before the summer of 2021 and we are going to have a consultant. So we really appreciate you showing interest in the county. This is probably new for us, but we don't hire directors every year. Thank God, but we've had four or five in the last seven or eight or 10 years. So we're excited and we will get back to you very quickly.
All right. Well, we wish you the best in your, your search, whatever you decide.
Either way, we'll be back.
You know, and we wish you well and have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to stay right on these interviews if no one has objection because it's scheduled. I think we're right on schedule. Is Nancy, can Nancy hear us? So the second phone.
Yeah, Commissioner Shay, you're, the next person up is Bernie Lynch from Community Paradigm.
Okay, well, we have Bernie come in and go on.
Is there somebody else there too? I should be, hi, this is Bernie Lynch. Also here, hi, also here is Sharon Flaherty. She should be.
We see Sharon.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Bernie, good afternoon. This is Joe Shay, the chairman. We are in receipt of your application. It was sent out to the commissioners last week and reviewed and we scheduled the, we scheduled these interviews for today. Perhaps you heard me talk to Mary about what I think, I hope is going to be a schedule that we're going to try to keep to.
I didn't. I got, I got off so that I wasn't hearing all of your questions.
Okay, then we'll say, why don't, why don't, why don't you start and we'll talk at the end. Thank you.
Well, thank you for having us in. As you know, I'm Bernie Lynch and I'm joined by Sharon Flaherty of Community Paradigm. We also have a number of other members of the team that would probably be working on this particular recruitment. Just by way of explanation, Community Paradigm was started roughly seven years ago. After I left the position of city manager for the city of Lowell. I have roughly 40 some odd years of experience in municipal government and some, some state government. Over the last seven years, we've been providing services to municipalities, regional entities, the Franklin Regional Council of Governments, some state agencies on public management type efforts, but also doing a considerable amount of recruitment. Over that, over the last five years, we've, we've done over 80 searches, I believe it is, here in Massachusetts for public positions, primarily municipal. But we also, as I said, we've done some other work, you know, by, by way of example, the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission hired us in 2016 to fill their executive director position. They were pleased enough with the work we did that a year ago, they brought us back to do the search again because the person had moved on. And we just learned this past week that we're probably going to be going back once again because the executive director moved on to a different position after that. We don't like having to fill positions multiple times, but we do like the fact that they were pleased enough with the work that we did in getting them good candidates that they, they've asked us to come back and work with them again. The same goes for a number of our municipalities that we've worked with. So that's a little bit of background. I'm, my, I'm municipal government. Most of the members of the team are municipal government. Sharon's background is in communications and she's got a background in journalism primarily. And, you know, I think our, you know, our proposal pretty much spells out what we do. And I think, you know, if I could, one of the most important things that we do is coming in and finding out exactly what you want for your next county director. You know, that's a good part of what Sharon does and her, her research work, interviewing each one of you, gathering materials, and out of that comes a, the position profile. And I sent you an example of one that we did for another, for one of the municipalities that we've done work for. I think I sent you the Norfolk position profile we did for their town administrator. We think that that's a very valuable, you know, we, we can do it pretty quickly, but we think it's a valuable exercise to go through, valuable process. It gives you a chance to think about what you want now for the next director. You know, what do you want to repeat that it's similar to Mike? What do you think now that Mike has been there, the new direction that you may want to, to go in certain areas? We know that you have the Abrams Group doing some work for you on financial best practices. So you need someone that's going to be able to implement those, those ideas. But, you know, we want to work with you, figure that out so that then when we go out and do the recruiting, we're actually, you know, getting the type of candidates that you think would be the best fit for the county of Norfolk. So, you know, that's, that's the process that we use at the front end. I think we have extensive experience in this field of, you know, local government. By local government, I include county government. We, we know the, the people that are out there that might be a good fit, that might have the skills. We have a very extensive network of people built up over, you know, decades of work in Massachusetts here. We, you know, we do a, you know, if you talk to any of the references that we provided you, I think they'll tell you that enthusiastically, they will tell you that they're pleased with the work that we do. One of your communities in Norfolk County is the town of Norwood. We have been back working with them on a number of different projects over the last several years as we've, after we hired their general manager, helped them hire their general manager. And, you know, we go out and we work on your behalf to get you the best possible candidates that we can bring forward. What I envision as a process is we would recruit, advertise, bring a field together. We would then narrow that field down to a, a number of candidates that I would put through a professional panel that would include myself as well as a couple of other municipal managers. And I don't know if you know Jim Purcell, Jim used to be the town administrator over in Norton. He used to be the Worcester County Administrator. So he would sit on that panel as well for us, having knowledge of what it takes to be successful in this type of position. And then we would bring to you what we feel are the three best candidates. That's a process that we've used successfully. We have used it successfully in Dayton. Sorry to steal Mike away, but we did use it there. We've used it in a number of other locations. And we think it works well. And I think that our experience with the market, being the most active recruiting firm in the state over the last five years is indicative of the commitment we bring, the energy we bring, and the experience we bring. So, you know, I don't, I'd rather just sort of take some questions and have some dialogue with you at this point. So I'll, I'll stop talking and listen to you.
Commissioners, any questions of Bernie or Sharon?
I'm fine, Bernie. I thought you did a nice job. I read your documentation.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, a couple of things. Bernie, a question I asked the other group. Sure. You didn't hear it. I hope you didn't, but.
I didn't.
A couple of things. One would be, how do you outreach? How do you go about contacting prospective applicants? That's my first part. My second one is, do you keep on hand a pool of people that you would perhaps keep on file that you would perhaps go back and like a bank and then say, hey, there's an opening here? And I got a bunch. That's, I love, he always gives me extra time, so I'm using Peter's time, which is great. Third, your methodology of evaluation. How do you evaluate them? I do note that you had, I counted eight Norfolk County communities that you've done work for, which I want to check on, which is great. I saw Norwood, Dedham, Avon, a few others. So that's, that's a good sign right there. So you're familiar with Norfolk County, I would say. But can you hit upon those for me?
Sure. Let me start with the, the last part. Yes, we have done quite a bit of work. And as I said, if you talk to the town of Norwood, you know, we did their town administrator search. We just did their library director search. We're now working with the library or their strategic plan. And we did, we're doing some work with a couple of their other departments that we're talking to them about. And we've been brought in for the workforce development group that Norwood is the prime grantee. Norfolk, the very town of Norfolk, we've done the town administrator and the planner over there. So, yeah, we've got a good amount of experience in the, in the county. The, in terms of the, how we do recruiting, you know, like anyone else, we're going to advertise because there may be candidates out there that we're not familiar with that we will reach through the municipal association or through the International City and County Management Association. But I think, you know, obviously we'd like to see someone from Massachusetts, preferably Norfolk County, that would be absolutely, you know, the right fit for this job. But we do, we do have a number of people that have come across our desks over the last five plus years, and actually you could say, you know, 40 years that, that we know might be good candidates. We know people in almost every community here in the state in the various positions that they may hold. We have people that have applied for jobs that weren't necessarily the right fit for those positions, but might be the right fit for Norfolk County. So we have those in a bank that have applied and not been successful. We also have a number of people that have contacted us because of the work that we do that aren't necessarily applying for jobs, but they want to put themselves on our radar. I was speaking with someone just this morning who reached out and said, you know, can I just have, you know, 15, 20 minutes of your time to talk about a career in local government here in Massachusetts? We get, we get quite a bit of that. I get quite a bit of that. So we have all of those people. I would also note that another area that helps us quite a bit is, you know, there is this huge generational change happening right now as the baby boomers are retiring. The municipal association and Suffolk University have partnered to create a local government certificate program to produce the new local government managers. You know, the new pool of people that would be out there in communities. Both myself and John Petron, who works with Community Paradigm, teach in that program. I was the prior program coordinator. John is the current program coordinator. And that has brought us into contact with somewhere in the vicinity of 400 to 500, you know, people here in the Commonwealth that are interested in advancing their career in municipal government. We, we have contact with all of those people. So we have a, a huge, we have a website that gets 6,000 hits a month that people that are looking at the positions that we post and staying, you know, reaching out to us. So we have a huge, you know, database and network of people that we can reach out to. In terms of evaluating the candidates, I, I think that the, the best way to describe how we evaluate candidates is we work with you to determine what you want, what you need. And we certainly, you know, one thing about local government people like myself is we're very, we're very willing to tell you what we think. So when we talk to you during this process, you know, I may have some suggestions. Other members of the team may have suggestions as to ideas of the types of people we should be looking for. But most importantly, we want someone that's going to meet your needs and, you know, the strengths that you feel are important. And we're going to document that in that position profile. And that position profile will be a guide to us in terms of evaluating the candidates. So if you want a particular strength, let's say, in human resources, or if you want to strengthen someone with experience doing capital projects or someone who has a strong finance background or someone who's well-connected with other state or county organizations or local governments, those are things that we're going to put on our list that we will then evaluate each one of the candidates to, you know, in certain rubric of, of, you know, evaluation. And the professional panel will narrow it down based upon that, those criteria.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? I have one or maybe two, Bernie. Generally, most of us come out of a city or a town in Norfolk County and then you, we come to the county. County is as old as, as Suffolk County, we broke away, I think it's 1783 from Suffolk County.
Yep.
But there is a uniqueness about the remaining county governments that we have here in Massachusetts.
Yes.
It's, it's, depending on who I'm talking to, I, I call us the, the stepchild of the, of state government or other things. But.
Yep.
There are, there's. there are, there's unlimited potential and there's terrific things going on in these counties. We do have a funding issue because the general laws don't address it as well. There are, there, there hasn't been a change in 27 years. So although we have many of the functions of the cities and towns, and if you were on earlier, you heard we had our maintenance director in and stuff like that. We have a golden little place down the street in Walpole, which is our agricultural high school. Extremely proud of it. As, although as an Norfolk County person all my life, a Quincy person, certainly knew about Norfolk Aggie. I never had any idea till I became a commissioner in 2015 how unique, popular, and dynamic that place is. However, with it, with its 338 acres, with its eight or 10 buildings, you have all the old issues that everyone has. Maybe revolving around a dollar bill, how to support all this. Having said that, I, I, I'm happy to hear you mention you had an associate, and I think I do, I have met him over the years, I knew the name right away, that had some experience in county government because I'm still amazed, and I'm a former city clerk among other things, when I go see other people, they still don't know what county government does. They do in this little corner, of course, it's been gone in the other corner, but we're trying to, we're trying to regionalize and get stronger and, and pay these bills and do the very best job we can for everyone. Been extremely difficult. I think this is the first time we probably, and I can't say ever, but I go pretty far back and on, on the board and knowing the previous, my successor, the commissioner that I took his place and he was there for 23 years. When I'm going outside and, and hiring a consultant. I think I said to Mary from UMass who was preceding you, I think, I know, I know, I'm, we're committed to it, the three of us. We're also committed to a bit of a timeframe. Later on in today's agenda, item number 13 is some discussion among the commissioners in open session, of course, about review of the search and, and anything else that the commissioners want to bring up. So I think we'll be ready to get back to you in a timely way. I don't want to call you back tomorrow and then tell you we want to, and say we're going to hire you and tell you we want a director by, by April 1st or something, but, you know. I, I think the timeframes you outlined in your proposal are, are very, very similar to ours. In addition, the previous board, of which Commissioner Collins and I are repeats, but Richard, Rich Dick Stady, of course, was, is on the advisory board, had been for a number of years, took another bold step and gone outside and hired the Abrams group. We're not throwing that money away. They're, they're deep into this. I'd like to tie all this together as, as where it's related. And I, I just want to get it all out and tell you that we've got a little more work to do today and, and everything, but that I think we're, we're going to be ready to go and, and inform one of you within the next week, hopefully, that we'd like to sign a contract. But I, I, I want to stress the uniqueness of county government. And when I say uniqueness, it's, it's a, it's a positive thing in my point, but we sure have funding issues and we sure have old buildings, et cetera, et cetera, things like that. And we have beautiful buildings too, and we have a lot of them, so.
If I, if I could, if I just comment.
I don't mean to ramble, but I I'm trying to get it all so we can, we can, we can get studying here and get going.
Yeah, my, my, you know, as I said, my background's working for, I was the town manager of Chelmsford for 20 years. I was the city manager of Lowell for almost eight years. I'm a, I'm a, you know, municipal guy. But I will tell you, I, I think there's a wasted opportunity here in Massachusetts that we don't take more advantage, or we hadn't take, we haven't taken more advantage of county government. And as I said, we just did this project for Frank, we were in the middle of the project for Franklin Regional Council of Governments, where of course Franklin County was abolished. It's, many of its functions turned over to the state. But they have, they have a, an opportunity there. They've done some amazing things as a regional entity. And I think other counties of the, of the state really are just ripe for more in terms of service delivery. I always felt as a city or town manager that there should be more activity in Middlesex County or any of the county governments to bring cities and towns together to get things done. So I couldn't agree with you more about the value of county government and the opportunities that it brings, which is makes this particular recruitment particularly attractive for me.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner.
I'm not trying to belabor this, I know we have a
No, I have one more question too, but that's all right, we're gonna
Yeah, I mean, while he's here
Give it the time it deserves.
It's good, I want to make sure we're going forward the right way. And I, I echo what you're saying. You'll find Bernie, we're all very proud of our role as commissioners. We're very proud of Norfolk County. We take our job seriously and we are trying to move this county ahead. And so, you know, when you, sometimes county government has a bad rap, as you know, but not in this county. It's always been highly respected and we're looking to make a good product even better. So working with us, you'll see that very quickly. We're all diligent, we're all hardworking, and we're all committed. But on that, on the process, I want to make sure I clarify what you did. It's caught, caught me a little bit. So would you say your group, you, you plan to have a couple of people, you mentioned some names, and I was trying to take some notes, and they would be the screening committee? Am I hearing you right? They would screen the applicants and then you would bring those to us? Is that, is that more us? I missed something?
Right, so let's say we get 25 applicants for this position. This, this is the thought process. Now, we can, I can customize, I can shift this around, but
I wanted to hear you right.
The 25 people, let's say 25 people apply. We have to, we give those people a level of confidentiality, right? They, we, they, they have, many of them will have jobs. They don't necessarily want to just put their name out publicly unless it's going somewhere. So we'll go through those 25 and narrow it down to what we believe are the top, you know, seven, eight people. We will then put those people through an interview panel made up of, as I say, of myself, Jim Purcell, probably John Petrin or Ray Santilli, who would, possibly Cal Valente, he used to be the town manager in Lexington. He was also in need of at one point in time. But we would put them through a panel interview process, perhaps give them an exercise of some sort to do, some type of assignment. And then we would narrow that field down to probably three or four that we would then bring to the commission and have you make your choice.
Okay, all right. Nope, you answered my question, okay. All right, so there's a difference there, okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
One, one last point, I think, unless the other commissioners. Bernie, when you're doing your search, should you be chosen? We have a board, and I, I referred to it, made up of members of every city and town, send one person to our advisory board.
Correct.
Commissioner Stady is a direct, to direct, a direct feed from the advisory board as well as having been a longtime selectman. We spend a lot of time with our advisory board. It's just mopped out that way. It's basically, they have a budget function. It's no secret, budget function is a big part of this, no secret that it's, it's pulling, it's tough every year because the buck is tough. And that's something that we, I, I think I should get on the record anyway. You know, we, we do have authority, but we do, we do work. And I'd like to say we work well with the advisory board. And I, I miss 27 or eight members and, you know, I was, last summer we must have met seven or eight times, but we, we crafted a budget unlike many that we hadn't done in the past and we're pretty proud of it. So that was the beginning of a lot of new things. But should you be chosen, we'll, we'll, we'll get right up to speed. Okay, last call, any other questions for Bernie and his people? I don't want to hold up, we have, we have a, you know, we are going to discuss this further down the agenda in open session.
Yeah, and the only other comment I would make, and I'll thank you for the time, is that, you know, what I've just described to Commissioner Stady was basically how I envisioned this. But I'm, you know, I'm open to sort of working with you if you want to modify that a little bit, particularly given your, you know, your last comments there.
Right, I'm not sure, but I, I, you know, I, I'm trying to get as much out, but I don't want to take more, more, too much of this meeting, but
We generally, different, we use two different approaches when we narrow. Again, the confidentiality is important so that we get people to apply. You have to retain that confidentiality other than the people who, the finalists that we bring to, to you. However, how we get to that, we either do through a professional panel, some communities like that, others like some type of appointed screening committee that they put together. We can work with you on some different options regarding that.
I'm going to ask that later on with my fellow commissioners. So we can, when, when, if we get back, when we get back to you, we, we'll get back to you. Either way, we can, we can, we can have those decisions made.
But either way Bernie, you'd be comfortable either way, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
We haven't talked about it ourselves, so that's why I asked you that question. I'm not saying it's bad, good, I just wanted to make sure it was clear on what you were saying, that's all.
Yeah, I'm glad you asked me because, you know, most, most communities, I would say, probably go to a screening committee. That they, that the council or the commission or the boards appoint. And others go with, others had said to me, no, we, we want you to put, you know, to identify the people and just bring it to us. We just did a search in Whitman, they did it that way, Dayton did that way, Swans did it that way. But, you know, we were in, we've been in, we're going to be in Hudson later this afternoon in about 25 minutes. They put together a screening committee. We were in Fairhaven last night, they put together a screening committee. So we can work either way.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, we want to let you get to Hudson in a timely manner.
All right, well, I appreciate it.
We have all your numbers and thank you for your time.
Great, thank you, take care.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, that was informative.
Yeah.
Number eight, old business. Anyone have any old business? Director Buckley, do you have any old business?
None to speak of, sir. We've, we've, we've got a lot of it that's wrapped into the preceding agenda items. So we can, I think, roll right into the next one.
Number nine, personal matters for consideration. We have one at the county high school, a substitute instructor, and one notice of retirement from the registry of deeds. Could I have a motion, please?
Sure. So the Aggie, notice of continued employment for James V. Ordial of Hobrook as substitute instructor, flat $100 per day, effective 2/18/21. And then it says, it's same person, notice of continued employment for the same individual, effective 3/8/21. So I'll make the motion.
Wait, for a long-term stop, right?
Sweet, long-term stop, yes.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion made and seconded on the first one, Norfolk Aggie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Number two, at the registry of deeds.
I, Canton person, I'll take it. Notice of retirement for Susan Columbo of Canton, Mass. As head clerk, her date of retirement would be 2/13/21. We wish her well.
We do. Second.
Number two, motion of Commissioner Stady, notice of retirement of Susan Columbo of Canton as the head clerk of the registry of deeds, all in favor? Aye, congratulations Susan.
Dick, you want the warrant?
Yep, I got it. Warrant, Mr. Chairman, move the following. Motion to approve the county weekly payroll of 21-333 in the amount of $138,596.23.
Second.
All in favor of weekly payroll in the amount of $138,596.23? Aye, that's unanimous, number two.
Second, motion, Aggie expense 12-08 in the amount of $165,967.31.
Second.
Motion on agricultural school expense 12-08 in the amount $165,967.31, all in favor? Aye, unanimous. And the county expense warrant, please.
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman. I'll move the approval of the county expense warrant of February 3rd, 21, in the amount of $59,366.72.
Second.
All in favor of the county expense warrant in the amount of $59,366.72? Aye, unanimous, thank you. Number 11, Assistant Clerk, Assistant Director Buckley is going to give us an update on legislative priorities as well as a brief update on last week's meeting that he and Commissioner Collins attended.
Excellent, Mr. Chairman. A, a, a very brief note on the payroll and warrants for approval. This is never an issue when we were all together around the big table, but as I sit here, there are a number of payroll warrants. So we can make plans offline if, if you would like us to stamp those warrants for you or I can take them to your homes and have you physically sign them as well. But again, this, we were all together, you never had to worry about that, but now that we are.
You can, you can stamp mine, Bill.
Excellent, sir. Appreciate it, but it's, it's, it's not a pressing matter, but I just wanted to note it as I, as they stare at me here at the conference room table. So an update on our county legislative priorities, I, I think I'll, I'll go with the, the new bill first and then go into the old business of outside section 77. We did have a very productive meeting with Commissioner Collins and please feel free to chime in on Friday with County Treasurer, Plymouth County Treasurer, Tom O'Brien, Commissioner Collins, Plymouth County Commission Chairman Greg Hanley, as well as John Mitchell from Bristol County and my fellow Buckley, John Buckley, the Register of Deeds was also present and he was actually quite helpful. Billy O'Donnell says we all got kicked out of Ireland at the same time. We, we, he has just about as much hair as I do, so I think, I think it's very possible. But, and we, we used to ask about that at the State House all the time. A crucial thing that came out of that meeting was the, the consensus to pursue one bill. And I think, you know, we, we've heard from Chairman Shay, as well as other people, that one of the stumbling blocks for legislators was they would say, I have two bills in front of me. Which, which do you want? Plymouth says we should do this and Norfolk says we, we should do that. So the, the, the goal of filing one bill, which will be an act relative to deeds excise receipts, which I have sent to you and will follow up with additional information after this meeting, has been filed by Chairman Galvin from Canton and his staff, Brett Hoffman in particular, as well as Aaron O'Connor, his chief of staff, and John Mahoney, who's a longtime State House hand and, you know, administration official, have been superb, reaching out proactively and working with us. The, I, I will note that Chairman O'Brien is turning this into a bit of a competition for cosponsors and currently Norfolk County is in the lead with five to Plymouth Counties too. Just as far as process goes, bills must be filed by Friday of, of this week. So all legislators are really focused, laser focused on getting their own bills in the can, as it were. And so we've had some really positive, Rep Rogers, Rep Phillips have signed on early, but the, the real work of urging people to sign on will begin in earnest Monday after everybody takes a breath and gets their own pieces of work into the House Clerk. I will point out, and I, I think it's important to point out, Representative McMurtry, who I know, Ms. Commissioner Collins had a pretty good conversation with, proactively reached out to us as well through his staff, who I am very close to. You may remember at the hearing for the solar field, he expressed his support for county government in general and his willingness to help us. So he was a very early co-sponsor of this legislation and he is reaching out to his colleagues on our behalf. I expect the same from Senator Feeney when we connect in the coming days. So on the House side, our, we have Chairman Galvin, who's the Chair of Rules from Canton. On the Senate side, the majority whip, Michael Rush, the Senator from the Norfolk and Suffolk District, even though he's a West Roxbury guy, his district is predominantly in Norfolk County, has offered to file that as well. He has not filed it to date, but his staff should be filing it within the next few hours or at most tomorrow. When we, when he does file that, we will be able to have a Senate docket number as well. The House docket number is House 1930. So when we have those two pieces of information, we'll really be able to hit the ground, running with that. A, a, a change to the co-sponsor process, which is important and helpful to us, is in, in the past, there were these drop dead deadlines. And now when a legislator signs on to a legislation, the date with, with which they sign on is, is put next to their name and they're put on the top of the billfold. In the past, if, if you would be on the deadline, you had to kind of scurry down to the clerk's office and scroll your name on the bill physically and no one would really see that publicly. So what, the help there is we can show So what, the help there is we could show, number one, strength that a lot of people have signed on to our legislation early, but also as people, as the momentum builds, we can, we can still get them on the top of the, the bill and get their, kind of, their imprimatur as a legislator, which is, I think, very important. I, I have sent you guys a bill summary, but in the interest of time, I'm happy to unpack it. But it basically, it is a percentage of deeds that size receipts that, that would go to the counties. There's a smaller percentage, there's a percentage, 20% for Norfolk, Bristol, Plymouth, Dukes and Nantucket. There's a smaller percentage for Barnstable because they have their own funding stream. And I have, I did speak this morning with Bristol County Director Maria Gomes. And when we have this, the rush bill number, we will get all of that information in a package to Commissioner Mitchell, who is a former mayor of Fall River, is going to do the legislative outreach down there. I, I am going to help out with the people sort of north of where you can get linguisa on a pizza in Bristol County. So the Attleboro, obviously, we've reached out to Rep Barrows, who represents both Foxborough in Norfolk County and Mansfield and Norton in Bristol County. So that thing is, that's chugging along. I've also reached out to Jack Eunice in Barnstable. So it, from my perspective, from a staff perspective, the, the message to legislators is unified. The work is unified and that's really exciting, to be perfectly honest. Although if, if I pick off people from in other counties, I am taking credit for, to our total in our race with Tom O'Brien. Another thing that's important, and I will send an updated list of commission of legislative contacts to you, is on Friday, as we met with our fellow county officials, the, the House and Senate huddled and they gave out leadership assignments. This is really wonderful news. There are 15 representatives for Norfolk County, 13 of them are in leadership positions. And of the other two, one's a Republican and one's Teddy Phillips, who's a freshman. And he, he got pretty good assignments. So we, we out, the, let alone the fact that Speaker Mariano was the first speaker from Norfolk County in over 100 years. But we have the Chair of the Powerful and Important Rules Committee is Bill Galvin of Canton. McMurtry, Chair of Veterans, Chair of Bills in Third Reading is Denise Garlick from Needham, which is really important because that's a procedural committee. And as we get later into the session and things start to move, her assistance is going to be crucial. Likewise, Chairman Husak from Braintree is the Chairman of Revenue. And this bill that we are filing last session was sent to the Revenue Committee first. So that's, it's, it's a huge deal, not, not only to have a member of the county delegation controlling the bill. He's also kind of a person who, despite his chairmanship, he's kind of in, in the inner circle of leadership. And we also have, you know, Jamie Murphy and Bruce Ayers on Financial Services, which this bill touches as well. You know, Alice Paich, Tommy, literally everyone. Rep Rogers is back in the fold as well. So, and many of these people have had preliminary conversations with us. Happy to help. Just let me get through Friday. So that's all very good news. As we talk about the outside section, so, so there's that piece. I'm also continuing to follow not only these two pieces of legislations, the same piece filed in both branches, but other pieces of legislation that could impact county government. We're, we're kind of, there's some registry of deeds bills that are filed by the deeds association that we're just, we're going to kind of track a little bit because they're in our sphere. We're also going to look for any unfriendly pieces of legislation. And that also goes for any budget, budgetary vehicle, any sort of bond bill. So that there's a lot of, as, as we sort of discussed at length last meeting, that outside section that the governor has put forward is, is a piece of language that could be applied to many vehicles. So we, we're working collaboratively throughout the, the six remaining counties with our counterparts to just kind of keep an eye on all, all of these, these pieces of moving parts. And, and to kind of, to close, on the outside section piece, I did send you a slightly updated center section for that letter. I would advise that we kind of keep our powder dry until March. And the reason being is in March, the Chairman of Ways and Means meets with every single legislator in the, in the House and asks for their priorities in the budget. And those meetings really begin March the 1st in, in that timeframe. We've, we've had good conversations, that leadership is cool to the proposal in general and that I think there was a consensus out of Friday's meeting that the, the way with which you approach this proposal is one of, you know, kind of respectful opposition. But it, I don't believe we need to pull the fire alarm. But I would suggest that we kind of continue looking at that letter and perhaps send it out March the 1st, just as reps are starting to have their meetings with Ways and Means so that they can have it in hand to say, oh, and by the way, outside section 77, could you make sure that doesn't get in there? And so it, it's, it's a soft ask. The easiest thing to ask a legislator is for them to not do anything, to not include something. So I, I think that would be a good course of action and we kind of continue to. I know John Mitchell indicated that he would reach out. Obviously Senator Rodrick's is a constituent, he is a constituent of Senator Rodrick's from Bristol County. We also, the Majority Leader is in Easton, represents Eastern Brockton, is within the county system. So most of the leadership in the House and much of the leadership in the Senate are from areas that continue to have counties. So all these things are great news, as Commissioner Collins can say. We survived in large part because of the strong relationships he and, you know, his predecessors had with our state delegation. And so I, 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 all of the things in front of me, all the things I've just brought up are really positive. I'm happy to ask, answer any terrifying questions and provide other informations as we go forward. I know that's a lot, but.
Oh, yeah.
I can, I wish, I wish we had the affordability here of the wherewithal to make Bill just our Assistant Director of the Legislative Pairs.
Yeah.
However, being as we're broke, you're going to have nine other jobs, but that was excellent.
As I told you, it, the, the worst part of all this is that we can't go up and park, you know, drop our jackets in Chairman Galvin's office and run around the building and lobby people. Because it's, 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 as you have done, and I know Commissioner Stady is a selectman, you've been up there. It's a fun thing to do. It's, it's these relationships.
I'm just never, I'm not as successful as, as people think, but of course it's fun, but.
That's how I started because I met Frank Cagney on a bill. He came in and sat in my office to talk to me about a bill and that's my first interaction with Norfolk County Government, five or six years ago.
Any questions?
Yeah, real quick, Bill, nice job, good report. You're doing some great work there. Keep it up. I just wanted to, I guess, publicly commend Representative Galvin for taking a lead on this. And I'll make sure I follow up on it personally as well. And the other two sponsors, McMurtry and Ayers are very, it's great to see their names along that bill. That's fantastic. Did you want us to give you feedback or comment on those paragraphs? And also, are you going to, is, is it also your intent to reach out to other reps? Because I noticed like, for example, there are a few missing. Is, are these the key ones?
Oh, this is, that was literally two hours of work.
Okay, okay.
That was, those were the co-sponsors within two hours of being filed, which by the way, Bruce Ayers wanted me to publicly say, whatever Joe wants me to sign on to, I will sign on to.
There you go.
So the, these, since, since the packet went out, Representative Rogers and Phillips have already signed on, as well as Kathy Lanatra and Ma, Mauret Torre.
Oh, good.
Plymouth County. And so we're, we're literally, it's, it's, the ink hasn't been dried 20.
Okay, great. Okay.
No, but I, I think it's, it's important, if you do reach out to Chairman Galvin, I would really stress how phenomenally supportive his staff has been to these efforts and flexible and hopping on the phone and troubleshooting. So they've been, they've been.
I will. I'll make sure I do that. Good job. Thank you. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you.
Hey Joe, if I can just jump in, Bill did a great job at the meeting the other day. Bill, Bill, Bill did a great job at the meeting the other day.
Right. I know it, as we discuss, he's, this is, this is right up his alley, so to speak.
Peter and I would double mass. We would have liked to have perhaps not met in person, but.
Yeah, how did that work? Jeez.
Eventually we'll get there, but it's, it's, it's a struggle. But when we do, I, you're the man for the job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, number 12, kind of straightforward. This is a approval of the 2019 fiscal 19 annual report. I see, it was in your package, if you had, packet, if you had time to review it. We are required to submit any report. We have them back to, who knows, 1850 forward.
Who's that go to, Mr. Chairman? I'm just curious. I didn't know you did that. That's interesting. I know a town does that. Every town has an annual report. Does that just get filed or is it publicized?
It's filed, but I, I was going to insist with our new transparency and our hope for more work on our website, make sure that it gets on there, make sure that it gets easily distributed and, and more readily available than it probably has been in the past. But we are required in. And, you know, maybe we can say, there's a lot of repetition, but.
Yeah, maybe.
We'll be working on 20 right away.
Send one to every town? Like send a report to every town?
I believe we automatically do. I don't, I don't know if Bill knows that, but it comes up every year and we do. I think in my years in the city of Quincy, I used to take receipt of it every year and I, I think it still goes on.
It's great.
It is statutory. If, if I see Phil unmuted himself.
Would you like me to answer that?
Yeah, would you like to, Phil?
Sure, yes.
Bill, I'm sorry, Phil, Phil knows all about this.
Yes, yes, I'm the person that puts it together. Through, per statute, it's kind of strange because the county commissioner's office is charged with putting it together and the treasurer, the treasurer's office is charged with distributing it to the cities and towns.
Oh, okay.
Yes, so they each get a copy.
Okay.
So once, once, once the commission is approved, we'll print it out, bind it and then send it downstairs.
Okay, well, we'll be sure to, if we approve it today, to get it right out to Treasurer Bellotti and have a discussion. Move it right along. But I want to, I want to try to expand how we, how we, we circulate it, Commissioner Stady, Peter.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, this requires a vote.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'm ready to go. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
I, I'll second.
Motion to approve the fiscal year 2019.
Okay.
Annual budget.
See, I have to abstain since it was stuff I didn't take part in, but I'll, I'll second the motion. I think it's proper, you know, just.
Yeah, I think it's proper and it's pretty, you know, straightforward.
Yeah.
A motion made and seconded to approve the fiscal year 2019 annual report, ordered to the treasurer and get ready for 2020 fiscal year. All in favor? Aye, two to zero, one abstention.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Number 13. County Director Transition Review of Executive Search Proposals and Presentations. Review of options including interim and permanent county director position votes may be taken. I believe after discussing this with Director Mullin, while I was unavailable this past week, when I played catch-up, that this item is on the agenda as a result of interviewing the two purveyors who earlier spoke to us and as a result of our commitment to hiring a new county director and moving the ball forward. And I think it's timely. I don't know what else I can say. We, we certainly got two good applicants and I think that's a great, great start. And then if we can take a vote today, I'd like to so that I, we can inform someone and get started. If, but if we have a few other discussions about, I see this idea of a screening committee, which I had toyed with and written down prior to today. Let's talk about it if we can. And then let's talk about our interim plans because so much of it revolves on the makeup of this budget. We, Mike's leaving on March, March 4th. So you can start anywhere you want. What did we think of the presentations?
I thought they were great. Both were very, you know, well represented in terms of what they're offering and in terms of their background. I, I kind of give the edge to the second group a little bit. It seemed like they had a little bit more of a flavor or feel for Norfolk County. It just appeared that way. They had been involved in, I think, eight, eight or nine towns, you know, in Norfolk County, they rattled off. I think the question, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I think what I wanted to talk to all three of us should discuss is whether or not we should or need or ought to have a screening committee. If you're going to have that, then the question is, okay, now it gets into who do you put on there? And, and then secondly, I know, does that belabor the fact that, again, Mike is leaving and we need to get somebody sooner rather than later? The second, the second consultant group was interesting. They basically were saying, we've got the expertise, put us to work and we'll bring back the, you know, you, they'll meet with us, they'll find out what we want, they'll ask questions and then they'll go to work and they'll bring back, you know, the list of finalists. Whereas the first group was a little bit more like they wanted to see an involvement of different, say, stakeholders. So that's the question. I've got to wrestle with myself. I have, Peter and you, I'll be honest with you, I haven't decided myself which way I want to go. But it was appealing to me to have it simpler. I like the idea of the second group where they said, put us to work, tell us what you want and we'll come back, you know, with some people. So that's my take on it, but.
Peter, what do you think?
I, I like Joe's, I like, I'm sorry, I like Dick's evaluation. I thought both presentations were fabulous. I had no problem with either group. But if I had to pick one, I'd go a paradigm for right now. So Dick, if you want to make a motion for paradigm, I'll second it.
Yeah, I was going to hesitate, Mr. Chairman, and say, well, I may call those towns, but we can't. I think, my gut call is, let's go with them. I'm going to make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right, let's get that out of the way and then go to the question of a screening committee. Because I assume, as chairman, I will be reaching out to them later this week because I don't want, I don't want to, I don't, and, and both of them. We'll get right back to the others too and, and hit the ground. But I would like to be able to say, and we, we, we wanted to talk about a screen committee. Oh, we're not going to talk about a screen.
All right, cool. So I'm going to make.
Among us, you can say anything you want. So I'll entertain a motion on the appointment of that.
I'll move the motion, contract for proposal for executive search services for the county of Norfolk be awarded to Community Paradigm Associates LLC of Plymouth, Mass. And for the price as presented in their request to Nancy Rockwell of February 11. I think it was broken down inclusive in that vote. I'll make it part of the motion. Is that fair enough?
Second, little, little discussion here. Is Nancy, Nancy still on, correct?
She gone. Do you want?
I'm here. I'm here.
Need the money?
I know what's in there, Nancy, but what's the price off the top of your head?
What was it?
Off the top of my head, it's like $9,800.
Right, that's what it was.
$9,800.
Just under $10,000.
It's understanding. They were both within a couple of hundred dollars, right?
Yeah, so the motion, I amend that. My own motion to include the sum not to exceed $9,800, Mr. Chairman, and we'll make that motion.
Just make, Dick, just make it not to exceed $10,000. Just, because in case there's a couple pennies in it, just make it.
Good, good idea. Yeah, that's true. That's true. Yeah, all right. I'll make that.
Don't, don't go over $10,000. We're broke.
That's right.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Nat.
Could we have the motion as the price that they submitted? And then if something comes up afterwards, we can do a little addendum to their contract and add more monies if necessary.
Okay. And the price exactly was, Nancy?
Right here, 9980.
Okay, second.
All right.
Okay, let's get.
Now wait, Mr. Chairman.
No, any, and further discussion? I, I have none. I just want to say, they were both very good.
That's for their fees. It does not include the expenses, which would be separate. They had an expense in there of, I don't know, $700, but the, the fee itself for their services was the quote of 9980.
Okay, that's, that's, that's within the parameters. And the other one was very close, I think with 95.
It was, yep.
Okay, I'm going, I'm going to take this vote, but prior to taking it, I just want to say, I feel the same way. I was, I read, I read them cover to cover yesterday afternoon and not, you know, we've, we've, we've had UMass before, before and I hadn't heard of paradigm. I had heard of Bernie Lynch, but I didn't know him. I don't know him. But I thought they were both were excellent. You hear the first one, you feel, oh, look at how this people today. Then you hear the second one, Dave. They had a little different Norfolk County touch to it, which I liked. And I'm positive you, they can do it, but I'm comfortable and I'm now going to call the roll just so we can go. On the retention of a firm to help us in our supervise search for new executive, county director, all in favor of Commissioner Stady's proposal? Aye.
Aye.
Three to zero. Okay. Um, as I said earlier, I assume by Friday, I will call and tell them they got a, who the winner is. We'll get a letter to the runner-up. I'll ask Nancy to help me with that. And then I will have a brief discussion about things that are unique to Norfolk County and I think we should bring them aboard now. If the idea of a screening committee needs to be discussed. If the idea of a screening committee needs to be discussed, let's say that we should hopefully, if we can, get to discuss today. If not, I could still inform them and get hold of over a week. However, I don't want it to take a life of its own. Some things about it I like. Other things is, you know, maybe this is what we're paying them to do.
Yeah.
We are going to be very transparent.
Yeah.
As much as they allow, however, that I like the, I like them handling the confidentiality of it and et cetera because in government, there are no secrets. And if, if I get a call from my brother-in-law tonight, he wants to be county director, I'm going to tell him to call Bernie Lynch afternoon tomorrow. And I mean, that's the way it's got to be and I know, you know, that's what we're going to do.
I, I look at it, Mr. Chairman, you know, this, this is new. You mentioned, I think.
I don't think we've ever done it, but I don't, I never like to say, never. They may have done it in 1934.
It's, and it's, I think sometimes in government, I think we all can attest to this, sometimes you take baby steps to make a change very effective. To me, I'm comfortable with having a professional group do their work. They're getting paid. Let them screen the applicants. It will save us because we've got other issues too. As you know, we've got a superintendent resigning on the Aggie, all sorts of things. If this group can come back with feedback from us, with feedback from us and perhaps others as well, get input. That might be part of our job. Find out what the other stakeholders are looking for. We could do that ourselves, but let them do their work, come back with some people. I'm comfortable with that. I am. That's my opinion, but I think it streamlines it. But I'm also open, if Peter says, no, I want to have stakeholders and have a search committee, I wouldn't be fighting you on that either, but that's my thought.
I don't, I don't need a search committee. Yeah, I'm all right. I don't think we need one.
Okay, all right, good.
Okay, this is, you're making this easier than I thought because I've been thinking about it. I wanted to tell you what I was thinking about because I agree, after listening to both folks, particularly Bernie Lynch and I don't, again, have a relationship with them, but if I ever developed one, I'd say, that's what we paid you the big money for. Get us the best three or five names and then we're going to go.
Yeah.
All right. And that's the way I feel.
Yeah.
Okay. So we won't, when we, when we inform him, we will tell him there's going to be no in-house screening committee, but by bringing it up, I don't want to have it thrown back in our face either because we are, this is a first, as Commissioner Stady said, with baby steps before giant steps, but it's all part of a general happening here and we'll tie it in hopefully a little bit with the Abrams group on some of the issues and then get this all done by June 1st of this year, I hope. We have a close, we have a working relationship with a, our advisory board, particularly the Finance Committee Advisory Board, but we, we three have to make this decision. It's clear and we'll make it. I hope it's.
Doesn't mean we can't, we don't get input from them. We can certainly talk about what we're looking for and it's fine. We can do that ourselves. I think, but I think we'll streamline it and I, I think we should move forward, Mr. Chairman. Times are the essence, so let's do it.
Okay.
No.
I'll enter into my notes that, okay. We reviewed our options. And
That's it.
We're down to an interim director, which I'd like to push for because A, Mike is leaving March 4th. I guess he decided in his, in the minutes, his bittersweet.
Right.
Uh, that's probably a good way of talking about it, but we'll talk about Mike at a future meeting. A great guy. A, a person that we found through a little, little bit of an in-house local search and we had advertised ourselves for an assistant director. I don't know the specific year. It's probably five or six years ago now and we did hire Robert Delhun at the time. Poor Bob is no longer with us. And then we went to the packet of the people we interviewed when Delhun was hired and Mike was the strong second and that's how Mike originally came to us as assistant director. The rest has been proven by Mike. I will say that my concern is, as chairman, it's budget session. Everything in the next eight or 10 weeks unfortunately is going to be budget, budget, budget and it's going to be new director, new director. And then we're going to have to address the school, Richard, which is, I know we brought home last week at the meeting that I unfortunately couldn't attend. So let's have some discussion if no one objects today about an interim county director because I'd like to meet with the staff is, and I tentatively set up a meeting, this is our in-house staff at, at our office to inform them of what happened today. Most of them will all know it, but as a way of catching up and explaining, I'd like, I'm going to be talking to them, it's, I believe, 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock tomorrow morning. And if we have more developments, I want, or as many developments as we have that I'd like to talk to them about. So that brings it to this point. What are your thoughts?
All right, I'll, I'll jump in if I may.
Certainly.
Okay, so Bill's already settled with the solar situation down the Aggie. And he settled with the legislative issues, which are huge and he was of immense help at that meeting the other day. He actually helped steer everyone in the right direction. It was, it was nice how he was able to talk to the other counties, get them all online. That was great. To put on, to put more on Bill's plate right now, I think that's asking a lot. Michelle is the HR director, has been working with Mike on the budgets for the past few years. I think she's the one to go to. If we're going to keep it in-house, I think she's the one we have to go to to keep, keep the county running. She's qualified. She's smart. I, I don't know if she's going to apply for the permanent director position, but I could see her as, as the interim director, at least to get us through the budget. So that would be my suggestion.
Okay, well, let me, let me step in before Dick. We have a history in other departments when they're, generally it's a sick leave or if they're going to be out for an extended time, we usually take one of the people in the underling, an assistant or whatever, and make them the acting director and then for that interim time pay them. I don't believe we have the luxury of going to be in it. We talked a little bit, a tiny bit the week before last about going out, out to find someone to come, to come in and help us that obviously has experience. I even thought of and spoke to former Director Hagerty, who is willing to help in any way, shape or form. Wasn't jumping at, at the bit to come in and do the budget, but he said, look, I love Norfolk County. I bought a year history. I love you guys. You do, you're going in the right direction. All this new stuff is terrific. And he, in the back of his mind, always thought that Mike could be moving on, but he, other than volunteering, he really didn't want to be coming in every day. Other than that, I certainly feel Michelle could handle the job, but if we can resolve this today, I'd like to want to hear from Commissioner Stady and talk it out if we can. Commissioner Stady.
Yeah, it's just, yes, it's a great tribute, I think. I hate to say it, but for our transparency, because we didn't talk about, I didn't know it was even coming up. So this is, this is news to me. I think it's great. I would, I like Michelle. I, I'm impressed with what I've seen from her to date. My only, I would have a concern is if she's taking over the interim role of county operations in addition to also being the HR person, what does that do? Do we need to hire an assistant to help her out maybe and facilitate her job and make it a little bit easier? That, my, my first thought, again, talking from the cup, I like to do. Another thing I thought, see, I thought, now, I thought the way we were going, we were going to take somebody outside, somebody retired and bring them in, him or her in, him or her in, for a couple of months to steady the ship until we, you know, get our new person on board. But that's, it's intriguing. And Michelle, it's, it's an intriguing thing, but I would like to see perhaps if we can, you know, we could realize the money when Mike leaves, there is a vacancy, the budget. Maybe we could take some of that money and use it to help her. She might need some help as a, in her job as HR as well, because she has a lot of initiatives going on. That vaccine program I saw recently with DA Morrissey as an example. So I'm, I'm open to that. And, you know, Peter, that's a great suggestion if you think she knows the county. All right, is, my question too would be, and again, with all due respect, I say this with the utmost respect, is there anybody else who works with our budgets that knows that we might be looking at?
Phil, Phil works with the budget.
Yeah.
Uh, the, the style that Mike developed in the last couple of years, and I've been, I think this would be my fifth budget.
Yeah.
I've heard. Frank has a different style than Mike and, you know, Phil, Phil does some background work and, and some historic work and, and distribution, et cetera, and, and importing. I don't expect any of that to change. In part, I said earlier that I will be talking to the staff tomorrow or the day after, but I believe it's tomorrow. And that, those are the kinds of things I'm going to address. The only person in this room that I've had this lengthy, less, more than a five-minute conversation about is with a Bill Buckley because, you know, he's been here almost, well, he came, he was Mike, he was Mike's choice and then when, when the commissioners interviewed him, we hired him and, and it's been successful. I, I tried to explain to him all of this as I see it, but I didn't until I, until we had our meeting and get all this out. I, I didn't want to make any promises. I think Bill understands it. I think he does understand that right now. I expect if we took anybody from our team, they'd, they'd have to do their regular work too, but it's, it's got to be a person who has some command of that budget in the way Mike did it the last few years.
Bill, do you feel you could step up in that role and be in, and we're open, we're open session here. I mean, not, is that something you're interested in doing? I mean, in the past too, we've done, I think Mike was the assistant, right? And then Frank left and we promoted.
Mike was Frank's assistant. That's correct.
Right, so we've done that in the past. That's not uncommon where, you know, people were like, you know, I think even Dan Matthews at one time was an assistant and then got promoted up. I'm, is that something you feel you'd like to make a case for or put it on the back burner? I'm just asking.
Three, Mr. Chairman. I, I am frankly, I'm, I'm an apparatchik at heart and, and kind of dispassionate about who exactly is the interim. I think what is central to my concern, and, and I think we've, we've already had a discussion with this around, around this with Chairman Shay is strongly delineating the tasks that we need to accomplish to continue to actualize our goals as a county. And obviously, as kind of Peter has, has mentioned and very kindly, the Commissioner Collins has mentioned, solar legislative pieces, labor concerns, the budget is paramount in these next eight weeks as well. But in, in our focus on that, we, we can't let the other concerns, as you've mentioned earlier in this meeting, go by the wayside. So I am, if you would talk to me a, a year from now, I, I may have a very different perspective on this. If you talk to me, you know, after, I, as you know, the commissioners, their generosity of, are sending me to the MMA's Financial Management Seminar, which Michael took last year. And so I, I may have a different answer, but I think my central focus is in the, in the assistant's role to assist whoever is in that position and run a lot of interference, which I, I was a nurse's aide. I was a legislative aide. I, I do the assisting part quite well, I think, in my, in my own.
Oh, you do. Oh, you do.
So I think, I think the, I really am not concerned about whose title is what for the next 10 weeks. I'm, I'm concerned with helping with advisory board outreach, finance committee outreach for things we need to in our upcoming meetings throughout the spring. I'm concerned assisting the new person with getting the feel and the flavors, as you say, of Norfolk County. And I think if, as we leave here this, this afternoon, there's, there's a great opportunity to work, Michelle, Michael and myself and really delineate. And I know you're a historian, so we, we can talk about it kind of perhaps like the Roman Empire, East and West and, and what the, you know, what the areas of, of really concern are. I, I think I can thrive legislatively. I can thrive all things Walpole and solar and moving forward. And I, I think Michelle would be a, a strong choice for, for the position because of, you know, she's got about a year more experience with me in the budget. She also did really strong work with the pay scales before your time here as well, which is so crucial to that core driving force of, of the county, which is a, a, a movement towards both stability, but, but aligning ourselves with best practices. And I think that work has really shown through in that. So again, I, I'm dispassionate about the who. I'm just, I'm, I am very eager to have, and perhaps as we, as we go through this process, really kind of redefine and refresh what the role of the assistant director is. So if that answers your question.
Does, and I appreciate your candor and your honesty and your effort and of course your passion. I, I admire that, Bill. I, I echo what Peter said. We've talked quite a bit and, you know, it's in, the jobs you're doing right now are very important, very important for us, critical. So keep it up. Well, that's fine. You know, it's, that's why we're doing it right now. So, okay, so Michelle Aberdini would probably be a very good choice, it sounds, to end this up for a short period, right? The 10 weeks till we get someone in place. And I'm assuming somebody, anyone talk to Michelle about this? Anyone ask her? I mean, it's, Michelle, are you on the call?
No, I, I, I had a brief discussion with Michelle yesterday. They, I, I don't need to apologize for the past 10 days of not being available, but right about 10 days ago with, with, with Mike, I had, you know, what are we going to do?
Yeah.
Call Frank Hagerty, bring someone from the outside, and then I got sick. So this, this conversation's maybe a week or 10 days. It had to happen, so I tried to play catch-up, but I don't want to violate any, any confidentiality. Well, I'm not violating confidentiality. I'm just going to, I'm doing it out in the open, so that's why I had this put on. And I'm pushing as chairman to go forward. I know the budget has a way of devouring everyone in Norfolk County. We're getting better, but it isn't great. And Mike, Mike, I think is a very talented guy. And he had his way of doing the budget. I think he's probably doing it in his car. I think he was doing it home at night. I mean, you know, this, so I, I, my, my vision of this and, and again, my longest conversation has generally been with Bill and that's only in the last day and a half, is that we got to keep all the other boats afloat too.
Right.
And that's, I believe, how Peter feels or when he came up with that number. We never really, we did talk about going outside, but the one gentleman then was not interested and then Frank will come in and do anything we need, but he, he's, he's, I think he may have been devoured by the budget before he left.
Well, you know, the great thing too, it's a great call because when you think about it, if we do it now, it will give Michelle time to work with Mike and Bill over the next couple of weeks.
Correct. That's, that's the final thing I would say. Whoever you give it to, you can get them with Mike a couple of days.
Yeah, yeah, before he takes off. So, yeah, that's, so what, we need a motion on that?
Well, traditionally, we, we, we need a motion. I would put it on, well, we could do it now or we could put on next week's agenda, but I'd rather do it now and then, and if we want to adjust the pace next week, we would.
Okay.
And go forward. And I realize that the people are going to have to do their regular work too.
Okay.
And that is part of my discussion that I'm going to have with the staff later in the week. With, if you, if you gentlemen agree.
Peter?
Yeah, I'm also to make a motion for Michelle as interim.
All right. So I'll second a motion to appoint Michelle Aberdini as interim county operations director for the period of time effective, do we need effective date?
I believe it's March 4th.
Yeah, I think so too. Yeah.
To cover, to cover ourselves.
Yeah, March 4, 2021 and for the period of.
The new director is sworn in.
Is that okay? Or 10 weeks or we can, we renew it, but you want to do 10 weeks?
Either way.
Yes, we're, we're in the open here. How about 10 weeks? Period of 10 weeks and then we can, you know, that, is that sufficient? Didn't we say that? Or 12 weeks?
March, April is for a, I think it's got to be a little longer than 10 because we may have to carry this into one or two advisory board meetings.
Yeah.
I'd be, I'd be vague about it, Dick, because we don't know how many weeks it's going to be.
Yeah, okay. All right, so motion to wake her date effective March 4, 2021 and her term, her position will be such to be filled until the appointment of the new permanent county operations director.
Correct.
All right.
Okay, any more discussion on this motion? Appreciate everyone's frankness and again, part of my new duties as chairman is to push some of this information just so we can get to the next level here because I don't want to be accused of twiddling our thumbs and we got a big year.
Yeah, good call.
I do want to talk to everyone about. I do want to talk to everyone about, well, the school, but we'll get to the school after today. Okay, I have a motion to appoint Michelle Aberdini Director Personnel of, if, Human Resources Director, whatever we title her, as interim director of the county from March 4, 2021 until a permanent county, new county director is hired as acting county director.
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. It's three to zero. I think, I think Michelle is on. I'm not going to embarrass her. I don't know. I hope she's talking to all of us in the morning. But I'll, I'm going to, since Bill fell on the sword a couple of times today, I'm going to send Bill to handle that. But no, I'm not. So Michelle, would you like to say anything?
Is she there? I saw her thing, but.
I am here. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners.
What do you think, Michelle?
I look forward to work with all three of you closely.
Oh, good.
Especially, and I hope we are able to get a new director in soon. I'm glad we're going with the paradigm. I was too in favor of that organization, so.
Oh, good, good.
I, I look forward to working with them and work with all of you. Thank you very much.
Okay, Michelle, congrats. That's great.
We'll see you tomorrow.
That's great. All right.
Okay. Thank you very much. I know this is a lot, but we will, we'll, we're going to have a great spring here. So we're going to just keep pushing away. If you let me know if I want to do it any other way, I'm, I'm amenable. But we got to get going. This, we're waiting for COVID to end. I don't know, man. We can't wait any longer and a couple of, and these things have forced us to the table, so we're going to do it. Okay, report of the county director. I would, did we pretty much have it all?
Actually, through you, Mr. Chair, I have a couple of just informational things.
I do. I have one too. Okay, go ahead.
On the heels of 1006 Liberty Street in Braintree, we received this morning a letter from our good friends at Mastod about a easement taking in Bellingham. So we have given that to County Engineer Joe McNichols to review. There didn't seem to be time sensitivity to that one. So that'll, I just wanted to let you know that we received it. It'll be on future agendas. It also, the sign off has Fran O'Brien on it, so obviously they got to send us a whole new set of documents. Anyhow, so that's just another iron we're keeping an eye on. Also, there was a tremendous amount of chatter this morning around noon, leading up to about noon time on the Norfolk County Managers List serve as the, the good news is that six, those 65 and older are now eligible for the vaccine as of tomorrow. But a, a, a key component of that is that the Baker administration will no longer be distributing vaccine to local city and town boards of health. And they are requiring entities to gather together and in kind of collaboration and certify that they can give out 750 doses a day. I will, the letter just came in as we were in the meeting and I will send that to you from Secretary Sudders. But there may be an opportunity to work collectively with some of our Norfolk County constituent communities and help encourage regional collaboration, which is at root and core, our, our more, our, our function. But I just, I saw Noah Town Manager Mizuko is not particularly thrilled as are many of the others as well. Mike Boynton had, had something to say also. So there's, that's just something we're, we're looking at. It's, it's obviously changing local service delivery and there may be an opportunity for regional service delivery as well. And you know, as Chairman Shay, I mentioned just before the meeting this too. Unfortunately, we don't have a big empty building somewhere centrally in the county that we can clean and, and open up to those efforts. But I think it's, it's something we should be monitoring just because it's so crucial to the core function of our constituent communities.
Okay, well, that's good news and, and it goes without saying, we want to cooperate with everyone where we can. And this, again, back to my comments that we're, we're stuck in this horrible pandemic, but we, we got to fight that too and we're doing a good job.
Boswell County, Mr. Chairman, if I may, follow up what Bill said, some food for thought, just food for thought. I know Boswell County in the, is a little different animal in terms of how they operate. But in when I was running, I came across the fact that they actually have a, a county nurse and they have a county public health program. And I'm sure they would be set up better than we would be at the time to facilitate, you know, a vaccine program. It's just something, again, we may want to put in the radar to think about, especially with this pandemic and now there's an African strain out there and good Lord knows what could happen, you know, down the road. Looking at the county bill, as you're saying, as a facilitator of a regional vaccine program would not be a bad idea at all, you know, contact some of the boards of health, reach out to them. If we could act in some way to help get larger groups together to organize a vaccine program, that would be, hey, I'm not looking for more work, but again, it's another way to explore the county as a regional, you know, service or provider. So that's a great thing.
And three, Mr. Chairman, to the Commissioner's point, Director Mullen did reach out. You may or may not know of the Norfolk Town Manager, I believe, has a background in public health first. And there, there was some possibility of the grant money we, we've been working with that we received from the Justice Department of utilizing that. We looked into a county public health nurse and the, the real limiting factor for us was just there are no public health nurses and every community is striving to get.
A public health nurse.
Literally being like, Lord from one town to another and, and, and that was, that was the initial stumbling block when, when Mike put that out to the list serve of all the managers. But it's, it's something, obviously, the county, the Holbrook, Randolph, Avon, Public Health Initiative a few years ago, which was spearheaded by Mike, that, that was something along those veins. But I think it's something we should always have on our radar and, and wise to, to kind of look at. Believe me, I love taking ideas from other places and using them as our own.
Good.
It's wise to look at some of our neighbors to see what they're doing.
Let's get through solar and the exercise and then that'll be next year. We're going to keep you busy, Billy.
Okay.
All right.
If I can just jump in, everybody, I used my phone to join this meeting and I'm almost out of juice. So suddenly I drop off. I just ran out of juice. Okay.
I'm going to, I'm going to get you out before it runs out of juice. How's that? Anything else?
Real quick, we, we missed it, not recognized Commissioner, forgive me. Register O'Donnell sent us a letter dealing with the fire. I guess.
Yes, he did.
Right, so we just want to mention that for the record that we acknowledge the letter. We, we appreciate his willingness to work with us, as he noted. I guess as Director Mullen indicated, there are still some outstanding issues that we're working towards resolution and hopefully we'll get it one claim, you know, perhaps.
We want to get it repaired.
Yeah.
Who's coming up?
Do we want to get our own appraiser or someone to advocate?
I believe, I believe they've called an appraiser. I, I asked about that.
Yeah, it's just a thought. Again.
I think we do. We are going to, I'm sure.
We want to make sure they're advocating for us. You know what I'm saying? Okay.
Right.
So that's a thought, a thought, a suggestion. All right, that's it for me, Peter.
All right, one more thing. This is a positive thing before we adjourn in Rob Roddick's memory. I did a thank you from Dove. As you know, every year we gave, we give Dove some money. This year, we gave them a little more money that we were able to write a little grant. I know that Assistant Director Buckley handled it and I got a very nice thank you from Don Hayes, who was the outreach person, a member of the Board of Directors. Says, Dear Commissioner Shay, we're deeply grateful to Norfolk County for support of Dove mission and work year after year, especially this year with greater demands for help and ever before. Thank you. Warm and best wishes. So Don Hayes, sun will fall and I'll bring it into the office. A thank you. Dove is a great organization and long before this board, when Peter was there, they signed on. I see their government, people who give them money were one of the four or five Quincy, Mass. Office of Veterans, Victims, Mass. Office of Public Safety and the Office of Norfolk County Commissioners. So we'd like to give them more, but with this year we did. But they're in our thoughts all the time. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, well, this was the marathon.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't mean to push everyone, but again, this is going to be quite a spring. I'll take him, I'll take a motion to adjourn this meeting in member, I'm sorry, someone else have anything?
Nope.
Motion to adjourn this meeting is in order and then I would like to adjourn the meeting in member of the aforementioned Rob Roddick, a 17-year employee who passed away last week.
Right. It was good to have you back, Mr. Chairman. I'll make that motion. Great.
Okay, thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned and I'm happy to be back. I was in, I'm in a much better place this week than I was last week, having talked about all this that's going on. Having to be through it, it's really makes you think about everything, especially you, you great people that I work with. Thank you very much.
All right, good meeting today.
Thank you.
Take care, guys. Thank you. You're up, Billy. Thank you, Billy.
Thank you. Take care.